Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Board of Health Meeting for Wednesday, August 28th, 2019. 6:00 PM we'll call the meeting to order. And if I wouldn't mind standing and joining some of the ladies and clowns.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Just for your knowledge, this evening's meeting will be audio and video recorded for our future broadcasts on cable TV and also YouTube. Moving along to our first order of business, 3A. I think before this will, if I could get a motion please to suspend the order of business and take them out of order as we see priority.
Second?
Motion is based on second, suspend the order of business. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed, that carries. Just so we know, we received notice from our volunteers that they wouldn't be able to make it this evening. So if we could get a motion to table item 3A until one of our September meetings. So move?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. And moving on to 3B. 2321 Fieldstone Drive. Mr. Deeb is here with an attorney. Why don't you fellows just come and join us up here? I think you're familiar with mostly everybody at the table, at least our health agent and animal control officer. This is who we are, 23 members. So I think we'll let the animal control officer start first.
Okay, well, why we are here is, as of June 30th, Mr. Deeb kind of license ran out because we only gave him a six-month kennel license because we were talking about the bylaw change. Since that has happened, I had found out we had, when I went out to inspect, he had seven dogs plus one puppy on the property. That's what he got his kennel license for. When I went out there, there was nine dogs on the property. So...
Including the puppy?
That was not including the puppy. I did not see the puppy today. Well, we'll get to that. We'll get to that. So, and something else also brought me to that property, which I told him I would not discuss tonight. So my concern was them getting out. And because there was nine or 10 dogs on the property, the pack mentality. And so I was requiring a fence. This is why he's here tonight to tell us what the fence is and a few other things before he could get his kennel license back.
Okay. Just to fill everybody in also, I visited the property about 30 minutes ago. And the fence is in progress, the poles are up. I spoke with Mr. Deeb. I also wanted to check on the demeanor of the dogs, to see if they were aggressive, protective, or whatever. Wasn't sure he was home. I drove in the driveway. And the dogs came over, they were barking, you know, in a protective manner, but no aggressiveness at all. And then I saw Mr. Deeb and I got out of the car. And I had no problem at all with the animals. You know, they seemed to be friendly enough to me. I don't know what it would be like if he wasn't home. But once I was there for a few minutes on the property, they did quiet down, they were barking. But I found them to be not aggressive at all. And he told me his plans for the fence, which is why don't you tell us?
Okay, so what I'm gonna do for the fence is we're gonna put up...
Do you all have copies of the fences?
No, they don't.
Here, I have. So we're all looking at the same.
Yeah.
My name's Ben Downey, by the way. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, along, we'll do Wellington Street first. The fence that's gonna be put up along Wellington Street that turns onto Fieldstone is gonna be about five-and-a-half feet high chain-link black fence. But in back of it's gonna be wrought iron. The actual posts are all iron posts, not the regular galvanized two-inch posts. So I'm putting up a chain link so I can get it done in a reasonable amount of time because there's a lot of fencing that we're doing here. And then in back of it, I'll be, you know, as I go along, building the wrought iron fence. It's also going along Fieldstone Drive up to the stone wall. I have a stone wall over here. The plan shows it, chain link and wrought iron. Then there's also a driveway in the back that I'm gonna put an animal fence up from the gate, where the gate starts on Wellington Street. Totally going back of my house, it shows it on the plan, and then a little section to the stockade fence. Then the driveway that goes onto Fieldstone Drive, I'll be putting up a gate. Either a temporary gate that I can move back and forth for the UPS guy or a permanent gate at the end of the driveway. Either one, I haven't figured it out yet because I might want my deliveries to come in the back here. Okay, but it's gonna be done either way, whether it's towards the house or towards the street, it'll be blocked off. Then between my house and my neighbor, there's two stone walls and we're putting up a chain-link fence, same as on Fieldstone Drive, five-and-a-half feet high and wrought iron in the back. All this has all started already. Majority of the poles are in. I just got maybe a dozen more poles to put on the neighbor's side of steel. But I didn't do any today because it was raining.
Yeah, they're all set in concrete too, and I noticed today.
Yeah, it's in the ground three-and-a-half feet, all these poles.
I mean, we, the four of us walked the property the other day and Todd, Stacy, Mr. Deeb and I, and we developed this plan after that walk. I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, this would effectively keep those dogs on that property.
And keep people out. That was...
And it'll look good too.
And it will look fine. And he is gonna keep the invisible fence that is there now, he's not gonna disarm that.
No, not at all.
And he's gonna put signage on his fencing that says invisible fence so people don't think the dogs are gonna be able to get out through the fence or anything like that. And I, there are two rock walls that I told him that he didn't need to put any kind of fencing on because the one in the front of the house, there's a whole bunch of property that has a whole bunch of woods there.
Right.
The dogs have the electric fence. And in the back, people shouldn't be back there, but I did want him to put the animal fencing between the gate on Wellington Street and the back of his house.
Yes.
Can we go back a little bit though?
Sure.
I think originally you said, you had said six dogs, right? Now we're up to 10. Can we get back to how we got to 10 dogs now?
So, Mr. Deeb was in front of you all in December of last year. And before that, he had received a communication that he had to get rid of some dogs. And Mr. Deeb has always had 10 dogs, okay? From the moment he became involved with this board till today, he's had 10 dogs. When he received that communication, in a panic, he registered two dogs and talked to them.
I wanna know the house.
Yeah, we had talked about...
Yeah.
So that, the number of dogs that are, is listed on the kennel license, that was an unfortunate miscommunication, okay? It was always 10 dogs that Mr. Deeb owns. He has no intention of going above 10.
Right.
He's not a commercial breeder, he's not selling dogs, he's not buying dogs.
But wasn't there a maximum you could have during...
When I... So without the kennel license, it was the seven dog plus the puppy. I had no idea he had two other dogs somewhere else. We were told that he only had that many dogs. So have we put a, that was my maximum at that point.
Because originally, the reason he came before us was the dog had loose.
Right.
And we had said, okay, certain amount of dogs, now we have more. I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna be surprised again, say, we have more again.
No, no.
I know the fence is gonna help, but...
If we're ever back before you, which hopefully we are...
It won't happen, it wasn't 10 dogs.
It won't be 11, it won't be 12.
Yeah, it'll never happen. I'm an honest person, I don't lie to people.
I did, I did tell him that if we give him the kennel license for the 10 dogs, once a dog passes away, he cannot replace that dog. At this point. 10 dogs is a lot of dogs. It concerns me, and I've told him it concerns me for a lot of reasons. The fencing's gonna help, so nobody can get in and nobody can get out. That will help.
10 dogs is a lot of dogs.
Have they all been vaccinated?
Oh, yeah.
Aravias?
Every one of them.
And are they all spayed or neutered?
No, most of them.
Most of?
Most of them.
Okay. Did you have a...
We had a conversation that you needed to make an appointment by December. Until, if it's not done, I'm not gonna give you a kennel license. I, this will be my sticking point.
So I understand that. The thought, the thought that we have, I mean, it, let me just, I just wanna sort of explain where there's conflict here. Mr. Deeb doesn't wanna get his dog, I think two of them are not fixed at this time, but they're the younger ones.
One hasn't gone into heat yet.
And there's a, there's a concern for the health of the dogs. Mr. Deeb has a sincere belief that fixing the dog before a certain, they reach a certain age, it will cause health problems for them. Stacy has a sincere belief that that's not, you know, in the opposite...
It can be called for any, any reason.
I mean, I don't wanna, I mean, just let me finish my thought, please. What I would suggest to you tonight is that the, putting that issue aside, which I have no expertise in whatsoever, but putting that issue aside, the fence, I mean, the fence is going to keep everyone out of that property and everyone from leaving that property. I mean, the fence is going to, it's gonna be like Fort Knox over there. So we do have a disagreement with, a respectful disagreement with the dog officer on this point. And so I guess what we're asking the board tonight is to allow some time for his dogs to reach, I guess, a year and a half. So we're talking basically a year from now, to allow him a year to have his dogs mature for one more year before he gets, gets the two fixed. And I mean, that's the, I don't, that's what we would like to do, and that's what we've come with you tonight. We wanna see if that's, you know, if there, if there's a comfort level.
Are they saying that?
Yes, they're both females.
Yeah, they're females.
That's not my, my issue. My issue is you've got a pack of dogs. A dog goes into heat, you're gonna have some problems. I truly believe that was part of the problem that we had at 2477 Maple Swamp. So...
So they won't go into heat once, I mean, they won't go into heat once they're spayed?
Right. And one has already gone through the first heat cycle, the Doberman, and the Rottweiler has not, the puppy.
Right.
With this many dogs on his property, this would be a sticking point for me, for a kennel license. I understand, I've read both studies, but I also come to the U working in the veterinary business and knowing what can happen if you let your dogs go through heat. And the surgery's much more difficult. As soon as they go through the heat, there is three times more that they could come down with any kind of hormonal, hormonal cancer. That is just right there. And then you've got pyometra, which is an infection of the uterus, that if you're not home just for six hours, you could lose a dog with pyometra. It's safer for the dogs in the long run if you're not gonna breed. If you were breeding, I have, I can't tell you spayed dogs, but this is not...
You're not breeding, right?
Right, this is not a breeding facility. It's healthier for the dogs, it's in the long run. And I understand the other study, but there's been studies proven...
Let's forget about the studies, I got something to tell you. Listen, if you're a real dog lover, you really love your dog, okay? I feed my dogs every day, seven days a week. I care for my dogs. I had a rottweiler, her name was Bella. I took care of her her whole life. I brought it to the vet one day because she was limping. The same vet tries to turn me in, like I told you about. I brought it to the vet, right off the bat, the vet says, I know what the problem is with your dog. What's the problem? She got cancer. All rottweilers get cancer when you fix them between six and eight months old. We'll do an x-ray now. I did an x-ray and they showed her elbow all deteriorated, the bone from the x-ray. She says you come back here in two months, she'll have no bone left. And then it'll be the next leg, and the next leg, and the next leg. That's exactly what happened.
Well, you said between six and eight months old.
To fix.
Okay, so...
Spade the dog.
So if this dog goes into her first heat, which she hasn't yet, she's almost eight months old, isn't she? Seven, eight months old?
No, she's seven months old.
Okay, so she's almost eight months old. So by December, she will be over eight months old, so you could have her spayed if that is your concern.
Okay, but that's not my concern. My concern is the actual studies that I've seen, and I love my dogs, tell me, let the dog mature between a year and a half, two years old, and fix the dog. You'll be all set. When it gets to be nine, 10 years old, you'll have no cancers. There's like 15 cancers they get when they turn nine to 10 years old. But if you fix the dog and let it mature a little bit, I don't wanna breed dogs. I just want the best health for my dogs, that's all I'm asking here. If you let me fix my dog at 18 months, forget the two years, 18 months, both of them, I'll be happy, I'll have no trouble. And I'll raise my dog so it's, I know when she gets older, she's not gonna get that cancer. I'm not gonna let the dog suffer and get cancer.
How old are the dogs now?
The Doberman's nine months old and the rottweiler's six-and-a-half months. But the rottweiler hasn't gone into heat yet, not even once, not yet.
When is that? See, I'm not an expert in this.
Usually between six and eight months old. I would be surprised if this Rottweiler doesn't go, doesn't go into heat until she's 10 or 11 months old because of the start that she's had. She's small.
My rottweiler is huge.
No, she's not huge, not for the, how old she is.
I only saw one of them, I don't know which one.
Did you see the rottweiler?
I saw one.
And what'd you think about her?
Not huge, but you know, standard size, small Rottweiler.
She's a small Rottweiler.
Okay, if you go look in the medical records, from four months old, my dog at four months old, it's recorded in the medical records, 60-something pounds. That's a small rottweiler at four months old?
She is small.
I've seen, I've seen big Rottweilers.
She's 90 pounds right now, that's a big rottweiler.
Well, then the puppy that we saw on your property on Friday was not the puppy we're talking about.
Yes, it is.
Because that puppy that we saw was not 90 pounds.
Yes, she is. She's 90 pounds, if not more.
So one is nine months, one is six months.
The Doberman's nine months old, maybe 10. She went through a heat already, but I wanna let her go to a year and a half to get her fixed. The rottweiler is six-and-a-half months exactly right now. Six-and-a-half months. She hasn't gone into heat yet. She's healthy as can be, and she's big. She's long, she's short, but she's long.
Would you guys both agree after the first heat that you can spade?
No, I don't want...
That would be by December, which is what I asked him to have an appointment in December so we could get the...
Yeah, when we were on site, that was kind of what she threw out. Not that it wasn't agreed to, but that was kind of...
You're looking just for a certain time, like automatically a certain timeframe, a year and a half automatically?
Yeah, they're matured. Their brain, everything develops at a year and a half, they're fully matured. When you, when you fix it...
It's a kind of cycle in life, like after a heat?
No, not after the first...
A year and a half automatically?
After the first, a year and a half is about two or three heat cycles, then you can fix a dog, that's good. If you fix a dog after the first heat cycle, six to eight months, they'll come down with all sorts of cancer, especially the rottweiler. They did a study of 658 rottweilers, okay? You can Google it on your phone. Doctors did this, vet doctors did this. And any dogs of those rottweilers that were fixed between a six- and eight-month period came down with 15 bad cancers when they got older, nine, 10 years old. They all died. The dogs that they, they fixed at 18 months to two years, got none of them cancers, they were fine. 100% study.
What about the Doberman?
Well, the Doberman, I haven't done the Doberman, but whatever I do for the rottweiler, I'm gonna do for the Doberman because they're pretty close.
Well, you just mentioned a study on rottweilers.
Yeah, I didn't, I did, I've never had a Doberman with cancer, I'm gonna be honest with you. I've never had a Doberman with cancer.
Rottweilers are very prone to cancer.
Yeah.
Any kind of cancer, whether you...
She told you the truth, that's why I wanna save my dog, that's all I'm saying. But being honest with the Doermans, I've had Doermans all my life, now one of them's come down with cancer. Just this last rottweiler that I had at 10 years old suffered with the bone cancer. I fixed it too early. I don't wanna, I couldn't sleep at night, no, when I did that to my dog, when I could've waited another eight months and fixed her. It's not like I'm not gonna fix her. I'll put it in writing, I'm gonna fix my dogs.
So we're looking at next, next June, May, June will be a year and a half.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's right.
When's the kennel bylaw kicking around for when that's gonna be back?
That won't be until the annual town meeting.
Town meeting for bylaws. So it'll be about the same time?
That is gonna be ratified by the AG's office.
Yeah, I mean, it's gotta go to the planning board yet and...
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly done.
So you indicate that you're not a breeder, yet this dog is gonna go through two or three heat cycles.
Yes.
What are you doing to prevent pregnancy?
They're on my property, they don't come out of my property, off my property at all, never.
So the other males won't interact with them?
They're all fixed.
They're all fixed.
I don't have any male dogs that, they're all, all my dogs are fixed except for the two females.
So there's no chance that a dog...
Zero.
Not on his property unless a dog comes from somewhere else.
They're not gonna come through my chain-link fence.
Yeah, not, chain-link fence isn't up yet.
Okay, that answers one of my questions. Second, I have two other questions. I will never be convinced that 10 dogs belong in a residential neighborhood. I don't care what you say to me, I get you love your dogs, I appreciate that. But there's no one gonna convince me that there's a legitimate reason to have 10 dogs in a residential zone, in a neighborhood environment where you're surrounded by homes. So the only way I would be satisfied is if this was completely fenced in and that fence was secured. You said that you get UPS deliveries. How are you gonna prevent the dogs from leaving the property when the UPS driver does deliveries?
Well, I have the electric fences 150 feet off the road, so the gate would be before that, so you'd have two means of stopping the dogs. The electric fence and the gate. I went over that with the dog officer and the board of health agent at the property, so...
Yeah, electric fences don't, I've seen dogs on my property. They get by it.
He come over to my property, the board health agent, my attorney, and he just came over, they don't go by the electric fence. My system, they won't go by.
I only saw one area of concern, and that was on the west side of the driveway. The fence does not have come down to the bordering driveway. And I think you, when you had your discussion, you agreed that if, but as you say, it was to prevent another dog to come in to that unfenced area.
Those two rottweils.
Now, if you had 100% perimeter of fence...
The other thing, so everybody knows here, is you can drive by my house anytime you want, Fieldstone Drive. Drive down Fieldstone Drive on my winter and tell me if you see one dog. I've been by your house many times. And how many times?
I've inspected your houses, your dogs are very aggressive.
My dogs have no...
I walk by your house and they run right up to the edge of the property.
But they're not aggressive, my dogs have no...
Well, it's irrelevant, but if I'm someone living in the neighborhood, I'm gonna be a little concerned about that, especially if my kids...
But you know something, the dog officer, the other day, when I was out there with the board, with my attorney, I asked him. She said, every time I come in, your dog's out back. She'll, I pulled my truck down the driveway, and your dogs come out.
The fencing that we're gonna...
I would encourage the board to demand the fencing, that's, that's my...
Well, I am, you want a lot of fencing.
I have one last point. Because I have jurisdiction over fences, you're proposing to put a wrought iron fence, which I'm presuming is gonna be fairly fixated to stop the dogs from going through.
Oh, yeah.
You're doing it on a corner at an intersection, and you said it's gonna be five-and-a-half feet tall. I wanna make sure that you don't create a blind corner for the...
No, I kept it off, I kept, I did, I kept it off of Wellington Street by 25 feet.
Yeah, it's pretty far back from the street.
Maybe 30 feet, I kept it way back, so I, because I agree with you.
Right.
Yes, years ago, when you come out of Fieldstone Drive, there was trees on the corner, so people couldn't see that blind spot. I took them all down, so I said to myself, if I put a fence close up there, they're not gonna be able to see. So I brought it back like 30 feet anyways, probably 35 feet.
Well, thank you for having the full...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the fence is gonna be a wrought iron fence that's one-inch solid square steel, 10,000 feet of it. You can't bend it.
Okay.
Every four inches on center.
I had a good question. It says here four acres, correct? Four plus acres?
Yeah, it's four plus acres.
What does the bylaw say?
Bylaw, right now, for, all we have is the one bylaw that doesn't say anything about how...
It's, it's in conflict right now, it's safe so far. The new bylaw, because it has five acres, would allow it?
That's my same concern, in a residential area, 10 dogs, because what's, what's the number?
How long does a dog stay in heat?
Two to four weeks.
Two to four weeks.
And then after that...
Twice a year?
Yes, and then after that, you have to wait at least eight weeks to do, to spade them.
What are the ages of the other dogs, the other eight dogs?
Which, oh, the other eight dogs?
Yeah.
The red and white setter is six years old. Sophie's probably seven years old, she's an Irish setter, a field setter, short field setter. The Irish doodles are two-and-a-half years old, there's four of them. And the mother mini labradoodle's six years old, Lucy. Then you have the rottweiler that's six-and-a-half months old, and the Doberman's like eight to nine months old. And you, a baby rottweiler that's only 15 weeks old. That's it. Those are all the dogs.
Share your concern again about the dog, like you just mentioned a moment ago, when a dog goes...
Well, when a dog goes into heat, you have male dogs...
It'll attract other dogs.
It attracts other dogs. And if you have a pack mentality, and this Rottweiler is very submissive to the other dogs, very submissive, I'm afraid she's gonna get hurt.
By the other dogs?
By the other dogs. Okay, we can't probably do anything about this first heat, but to put her through two more cycles of that, the dog's gonna get hurt.
By whom?
I just, while I was on the property, any dog or person that walked up to that Rottweiler, she went on her back with her legs up in the air. That is not a typical Rottweiler response. If I didn't know who you, let me finish. If I didn't know, if I didn't know who you were, I would say that dog's being abused. That's how Rottweilers act or dogs act when they're abused. What I think happens is she's got that temperament that she sits back, and the other dogs are taking advantage of that. That's my concern. My concern isn't because I want to make you do something that I say. I'm looking out, as much as you love dogs, I love dogs, and I wouldn't do this job. And I'm looking out for that dog from what I've seen before and how I perceive what has going on on that property. You may not see it that way, but as a person that has been doing this for years, I look at it that that dog is very submissive, and the dogs on that property are taking advantage of it. And I'd hate for you to come home, her going into heat, and that Doberman or somebody else decided that, oh, we need to take her out because now she might be the top of the pack, and you come home to a dead dog.
My Doberman's a female.
It doesn't matter if it's a female or a male. I had all, all females that did, did what they did.
I think, I think we're going in circles here, but all I can tell you is when he was just at my house, my red and white setter came out of the house with a whole chicken breast in his mouth. I know how to raise my dogs, they have no aggression.
Can I ask?
I don't understand that, my, my dogs are fine.
That's not even a question.
May I ask a question?
They might be happy, but they have no aggression.
Just procedurally, I mean, are you, will you take a vote on whether to grant the kennel license tonight, right now? Is that, is that the normal procedure?
We could, but I would not vote in favor of it.
You wouldn't vote because of...
Because it's not resolved.
I would vote in favor till that fence is 100% in.
Yeah.
So would, would the, would...
No, that's reasonable, yeah, yeah.
Would the, would the...
That's my, that's my biggest concern.
No, no, I agree with you.
I, I think the perimeter of the property needs to be 100% fenced.
100% fenced?
Yeah.
There's always that potential.
Oh, let me ask you a question, and then I'm done here. What if we segregate the dogs during that period of time?
When they're in heat?
That was, that was gonna be my suggestion.
That would be fine, but the way the dogs, if you can do that, that's one thing, but I...
I can do that, it's easy to do.
Because the dogs have full run of the house during...
They'd have a supper, they'd have to have a supper, the area.
Yeah, I guess if they were to roll back, have a stockade fence and everything, close my gates.
You can separate it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You can separate it too from the others.
Yeah, I have a six-foot stockade fence that goes around the whole backyard, they can't get out. I could leave them right in there when they're in heat for the three weeks, I mean, that's not a big deal.
I mean, the fencing plan that you have in front of you is probably, maybe 90, 95%, it's not 100%. There's a, there's a big patch of woods in a rock wall that's not depicted here, that is kind of, kind of...
Well, that was my, my options, either segregate the dogs during that period, blow...
Yeah, I can.
Or 100% of fencing the perimeter.
I could segregate the dogs.
And I think separating maybe...
She, she, one day she came over to my house and let me know, my Irish setter called her one day, the battery was low, and she went into the street and jumped on a guy that was jogging. Didn't hurt him, but you know, she, the Irish setter panicked, didn't bite him. So she said, can you quarantine your dog for me? I said, yeah, so I put it out back in the stockade fence area, you know, 10 times the size of this room, for two weeks. Did what you said, it's fine, right?
How high is this rock wall in the back?
Which rock wall we talking about?
The one in the back? Side, whatever it is there.
Seven, eight feet.
That was substantial.
Say a rock wall.
No, it's, it's, it was rocky.
Seventy feet high, it's huge.
This is not, I would've made him put fence there.
The one in the corner is lower, but you can't like see the cars in Fieldstone. I'm just looking at the rock walls, considering part of the...
Yeah, no, no, it's a big wall. 10,000 pound boulders, huge, huge.
So, Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't vote in favor of issuing the kennel license until the fence is complete. However, provided the fence is complete and it's up to standards...
Size should have been...
Yeah, thank you. And then I would have encouraged some type of written agreement that as soon as both those... uh, dogs turn eighteen months that they're, that they're fixed.
Sure, I'll sign that.
Which will be next, will be next year.
Yeah.
Uh, next June, and in the interim, when they are in heat, that we're gonna require that to keep them separated.
Yeah, separate in the back area with stockade fence right there that I have, that's what I'll do, like I did the Irish setter.
That, that'll be my, my suggestion, and then, um, frequent, frequent inspections.
Yeah, anytime.
By the animal control.
She can come by.
That'll, that'll be my suggestions going forward.
Yeah, I, I think that's.
I just wanna interject one thing, so this wrought iron fence he's talking about involves an awful lot of welding, it's gonna take him a long time to do it. What he told us in the field is he's gonna put up the black chain link on these rails that he's putting up and then continue to work on the wrought iron outside of it. So I guess my question is, is just the chain link adequate, or do you need the wrought iron completed before you're signing off?
I mean, the, the chain link is adequate to keep the dogs in.
Well, we, we have a combination, so you know on the plan, I don't know if you saw it, but chain link and animal fencing.
Right.
So all that's gonna be up, the wrought iron's gonna take me a while to do the work, I mean, the posts are in now, but the actual fence itself to build it all is gonna take a little bit of work, you know, can't do that in a couple of months, it's a lot of fence there.
Yeah, how high is the chain link?
The chain link's gonna be five feet high, the wrought iron's gonna, when it's done, five and a half feet high.
It's scalloped on top, so.
Yeah, it's gonna be scalloped, you know?
So there won't be any issue?
With the files on the top and everything, it's gonna be nice when it's done, it's just.
I don't think getting, getting over the fence, my concern would be somebody putting their hands, but if, if he puts it far enough away from.
Twenty-five, thirty feet off, off the street.
Well, like, like.
And the invisible fence is inside, as long as it's.
The visible fence is twenty feet in back of that wrought iron chain link fence. So the dog's got a twenty foot gap they can't go into, so if someone puts their hands through the fence, you can't touch a dog.
Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty good, cause it doesn't look like they're charging strip to the fence.
Right, right.
Well, there's signs saying there is a fence.
At that point, if someone was putting their arm through the wrought iron fence, I'd probably be trespassing, so.
Yeah.
Thirty feet into.
But I'm gonna put the signs up like they told me to, you know, caution dogs. Like he was saying, put three or four signs.
Invisible fence.
Invisible fence, and he said to put caution dogs, right, he said?
Or something, just so they know that the dogs aren't gonna come right up to the fence.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all, but I'll put the signs on the fence, right, is that what you want, yeah?
Is that in a form of emotion, no? No, I just wanna, is there anybody out here that has an interest in this, that lives up there that came this evening? Okay. Yeah, I think we should, um, or we can uh, vote at the time when he's completed the, I think that would probably be a better idea, we can go up there.
And take the vote once it's completed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
Yeah, I'm working on it, just, you know, it's a lot of fencing to do, so.
It's a lot of fencing.
He knows, it's a lot of fencing, but I already got.
Yeah, the, the chain link fences, uh.
Chain link is a little easy to do.
The chain link and the animal fence.
Yeah, yeah, that's no problem doing the chain link.
Should those two that are in heat also be separated and?
Yeah, we are.
Yes.
Okay, so. We're gonna write it up with, with this.
No, each one individually, not, not together.
Well, the doberman's already gone through heat, so he's just waiting for the roddy.
Right.
Okay.
When the roddy goes in heat, I'll let you know the day she goes into heat, so she knows.
Okay.
And how many times do you lose to go back for inspections?
Whenever she wants.
I'm there often.
Yeah, she goes up and down the road, I mean.
I'm there often, it's not just once a year like I do inspections, um, I go into the driveway.
Yeah.
Um, there is, there's.
I know you care about your dog, just wanna make sure.
There's an invincible, invisible fence, so they can't go down the driveway. Um, I know exactly where that is, I have gone on the property without him there before.
Sure.
Um, without a problem, myself, the MSBC officer, and so.
We've been there. Yeah, we were there, they were all in the house.
We have a responsibility.
What's that?
We know you love your dog, but we have a responsibility, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I appreciate that, I mean, e- e- everybody has families in their lifetime, okay, kids, I don't have a family, I, my dog's in my life. You know, I devote a hundred percent of my time to my dogs, I don't know why someone said I don't live at Fieldstone Drive at my house. It doesn't make sense, I'm there seven days a week, I mean, I do work, I have businesses to run, but the first thing, my priority, is my dogs. Okay, and, and I told you, anytime you guys are welcome, I can get you all the invoices from chewy.com and all the different types of food. I give my dogs the, the mother hubbit biscuits, everything, beef marrow bones, I get, I cook twenty-five to thirty pounds of chicken breast every day for my dogs and two big round roasts every day for my dogs, I feed them twice a day, not once.
I'm gonna come eat there.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you have kids, don't you wanna take care of your kids, you feel good to come home.
Part of the family.
This is what my dogs are to me, I'm being honest with you, you know?
Why don't we leave it at that, and as, as soon as you think you're ready for an inspection by both the building commissioner and animal control and, and board of health. Uh, if that looks good.
In the meantime, you wanna swing by and see the work that I'm doing, you can see, I already got the, the steel up for the post, fifty something are already up. Doesn't take me long to do it, it's just I like to do it right, you know? I don't want the snowplows coming down the street and my poles falling over.
I have one suggestion, make sure you have a fire extinguisher handy when you weld and all that fencing.
Oh, no, I put down cement board.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I get five or six sheets of cement board when I weld, I don't know, I have a portable welder on the trailer, diesel welder.
Okay.
I've done it before, so I put down sheets of cement board and I'm good.
Okay, good.
Yeah, 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 I make sure it's, everything's done right, I've done it a lot, so.
All right.
You know, I can build it in the garage, but the problem with building the garage, every piece is different, you know, I'm gonna fabricate it right there.
So the only point of where I have is, we never got his name for the record.
Okay.
My name is Ben Dowling, my office is in Attleboro. Thank you.
Ben, sorry, how do you spell your last name?
D O W L I N G.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Mr. Deve, and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dowling.
Yeah.
We'll, uh, we'll wait to hear from you.
Yeah, yeah, once I get the chain link, I'll call the dog officer and say, yeah, I've completed it, come on down, take a look. You know, you could see the animal fence and the, um, chain link fence done, and then we'll go from there, yep, that's all.
Okay.
All right, yeah, I, I like to do things right.
Yeah, we'll probably have a meeting, we're gonna write up a couple of agreements.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
About what we've talked about.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
You know, if we get it done, we can, we'll copy you.
I appreciate it.
And, um, then we'll go from there.
And I've already spoken to my neighbors and stuff next door, he's happy, he's, you know, he's got two kids, he's happy with it, he's said your dogs, come, come on my property, and his wife and kids love my dogs, you know?
Yeah. Enough?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, have a good night.
All right, thank you very much, thanks for your time, have a good night.
Okay, moving on to the left item. Will you discuss an Act twenty-one seventeen, William Street? Mr. Roderick? How you doing tonight?
Good evening, everyone. For the record, it's Niall Zager from Zenith Consulting Engineers on behalf of Tony Roderick. So, we appreciate you guys seeing us, I spoke with Todd, spoke with Todd about this, uh, multiple times. I've spoken with Mr. Pilling about this multiple times and, um, before, I, I've given you somewhat of a draft design. Um, I went into some significant detail for our draft, just that we had something to look at, but, um, what I wanted to do was to go through, um, with you, your thought process on the location of it, of the septic system, cause as I'm sure you know, there's not a lot of room to fit this thing. Um, it's very limited in area, um, the soils are not, you know, they're not the best soils out there, it's got a high water table. Um, and for Mr. Roderick to be able to fit everything that he needs to fit for the building, the existing building is there. Um, it, it, it is very tight. So, before we finalize and come to an official meeting, you know, put a, official site plan together, um, and also get approval from conservation, um, I thought it would make sense to come in informally and just discuss with you your thoughts. Um, as far as the system that we're proposing, as well as, um, if there would be something else that you would be more in favor of. So, we're proposing, what we're proposing is a fifteen hundred gallon, uh, two compartment septic tank with a thousand gallon uh, pump chamber, and we're pumping that into a Presby system. Um, the Presby system allows for, um, a forty percent reduction in footprint, um, from a conventional sized septic system. Um, so, you know, we're, we're trying to reduce that footprint as much as we can. Um, we had to do a sieve analysis on the soils, uh, myself and Mr. Pilling. Um, took that sample, I brought it to a lab and had it tested, I sent the, um, I believe that, um, your office is in receipt of those results and it's, um, I believe it's, uh, exactly what we thought it was in the field, it's a sandy loam, non-compacted sandy loam. Um, so, we're all, what we're also doing is we're also wrapping the entire septic system, um, with a forty mil liner, um, to reduce the grade, um, as far as how far it goes off a breakout, uh, we're trying to minimize the impact to the resource area. Um, as well as we have retaining wall, um, on a good, on some portions of the, of it as well. So, um, I guess before I spend too much of Mr. Roderick's, you know, time and money, um, and I just wanted to find out from you, and I know that, uh, Mr. Pilling will have some input as well. I wanted to find out what your take on this, you know, this treatment, this type of septic system would be, and if you want us to do, use something else or look into something else, or if this would be acceptable.
Well, we're gonna let, uh, Agent report, um, he's been in, in discussion with you, so, uh, get his opinion and.
Of course.
Go from there.
Thank you.
Yes, and when all this started for me, I guess it was about six months ago, um, we talked about whether or not they filed the perk app, and I said no, because can't do it for new construction, uh, within a hundred feet of a wetland, and they submitted evidence that this was an existing building used for workers to, to live in, and there were so many cots, and it came out to about two hundred gallons a day, so we're talking like a two bedroom septic system, so it would have to be a, um, de restriction on this. But I see that there's a new foundation that's been poured recently. Um, and I guess that was to replace a structure that used to be there?
Same place.
When did that structure disappear, cause I don't ever remember seeing it, but I haven't been in town all that long, but.
Uh, two thousand sixteen, I believe.
Is when that addition came down, that you reported the foundation for? Okay.
Yeah, it was, uh, that was in, it was ready to fall down.
Okay, I don't remember, so, um.
Mr. uh, Mr. Roderick's took it down voluntarily, or I'm just gonna order it down.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, the issue we got here is obviously we have our own bylaws that say no septic within a hundred feet, we also have the state saying no septic within fifty feet. However, under the guidelines of repair, they can ask for waivers and variances in order to squeeze things in. So, we're kinda walking a line between new construction and repair here, and, um, you know, we could, you could argue either way, um, that it's repair or it's new construction. Ultimately, you know, where they are putting up the concrete now is kinda where, you know, the septic might wanna go to get it out of the fifty feet. You know, and the, the height of the foundation sets the invert of the tank below the water table, and the invert into the pump chamber below the water table. So, we've got some different things going on here, and like you say, ultimately, I'm like, all right, this is way beyond anything we've got to deal with in the two years that I've been here for new construction repair type arguments and, you know, if you want something like recirculating sand filter or whatever, but whatever we do here is, I would say precedent setting, but obviously whatever we do, we have to make sure that what we're doing is the way we wanna do this moving forward for anybody else.
I don't see the, the variance request for the wetlands.
It's not on, again, this is a draft plan, this is, again, it's not even stamped, I, I, it was more.
Yeah, he's never filed this plan.
I'm just saying that would be.
Yeah, oh, absolutely would be required, I would be submitting a formal letter, um, for our meeting, and, you know, I'm assuming coming in front of the board again, um, with the new plan that myself and, uh, you know, your agent had vetted and made sure that we're in agreement with. But, but like I said, before I get too far beyond that, I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page.
Instead of the Presby, what other system would you put in, like a FAST?
Well, I would keep the Presby and maybe put in a, a, a FAST system, I could put a, um, a FAST, you know, point, zero point five, um.
Just so we take care of, um, that issue, cause we're so close to the wetland.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, that is something that could be done, uh, I know, obviously my client wanted me to put this, this is, I mean, I've had towns that have granted things like this, you are allowed to grant things like this, but I'm not saying you have to. I'm just saying that it is allowed under the, under the act to be able to be done.
A FAST system is more, more treatment.
Okay, nitrogen removal.
Yeah, nitrogen removal, so when you get to dispersing into the leaching area, you have clean half one.
It's better.
And then because of, because of the resource area.
Right, right.
It's an idea, right? Your thoughts?
Oh, just one other thing, so when this law was created less than two years ago, was there any thought given to trying to find room to keep the septic out of the fifty foot buffer?
There's no room to.
Well, you created this law.
Not have a driveway.
So there were, there were form A's that were created and approved by the planning board, um, and houses built on them, and now we've got this house, we've got this existing structure on this property here, so that's, that's where we, when I came in, that's where we stand. So there, you know, Mr. Roderick split off the lots, gotten, signed off by the planning board, building permits, occupancy permits issued and what have you, people moved in and it's homes there, so, um.
When we approve a Form A, it doesn't necessarily mean it's a buildable lot.
Correct.
It could be conservation matters, or the septic matters, and we had, I'm on a planning board also.
Of course.
So, you know, um, originally we had put in a buildable lot, and then after some discussion, we, we changed that and, uh, you know, it's, on its face value is not a buildable lot until you get it, you know, as far as we're concerned, as a planning board. But, uh, there's other, you know, uh, other committees and boards that need to weigh in, and that's what we're doing tonight.
Of course, completely understood.
How far off the wetland lies it?
What, the septic system?
Thirty-seven feet, roughly.
So whenever you go, the state regs, if you go less than fifty feet, you can't get separation of water table waivers or, or size reductions. Um, I do know with the Presby, it's all an automatic kinda size reduction, but I don't know if because we're less than fifty feet from wetland, we can't get the size reduction. So I haven't done a lot of research on the Presby, cause obviously I was at the, if we're gonna move forward with this, obviously it's one thing, but if we say recirculating sand filters, then we're throwing this in the trash, so I didn't wanna spend too much time.
Yeah, I don't think it's that way.
That far, and, I mean, with that distance, probably some type of secondary treatment, whether it's FAST or whatever, you can't list what you go with, but.
I mean, with a FAST system, you're actually allowed a fifty percent reduction, uh, to, for the system, um, I would, my recommendation would be to leave the system the size it is, because you're not gonna gain that much distance away from, you're still gonna be in, within the fifty foot buffer, um, and to have the capacity, in my opinion, with that treatment, to me, is, is more beneficial than to try to reduce it to maybe save a foot or two to the, to the resource area. But again, I'm not the one making the decision.
The, the, the secondary treatment is mainly just to protect the, the wetland resource area.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not, not for certain production.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, we reduce the size again, you know, you're just setting it up for, you know, failure.
Yes, sir.
I know if you could make it smaller or fit it in other places, very creative, working from the past, you would, but it looks like that's the only place I can go. Myself, I would say some kind of tr- other treatment, like a FAST or something like that.
Give me one way in.
No, I'm actually in agreement, I, I think pre-treatment is the way to go, remove the nitrogen as much as you can from the effluent. That saves, uh, the impact to the wetlands, I further agree with you, taking any further reduction in size would not be a benefit. You're not gaining any setback allowances, you're just decreasing the size of the leaching area, so.
Correct.
That would, that would not be beneficial.
The only, the only other option I see would be if you were to go like to a drip dispersal, but that's ridiculous.
Yeah.
For this, when you, when you can get the Presby in there, so. With, I, I, I mean, I think with, with the secondary treatment, I wouldn't have an issue going forward with that.
It has to go somewhere, and it's the best to protect the resource area. I think.
So the only, the only local upgrades, um, I did, I, I did have the two, I didn't have the one to the wetland, we obviously have spoken about that one, um, significantly, but would be the sieve, which I assume you'd be okay with, cause it's under repair, technically we're treating it as a repair, we're allowed a sieve. Um, and then the reduction from twelve inches to one inch from the inlet and the outlet of the, um, so that Title V requires a twelve inch separation from the inlet and outlet of the septic tank, the pump chamber, um, what we have done is we've provided, they require you have to have a lot of tight rubber boots or hydraulic cement. I would, I always recommend rubber boots, but.
Rubber boots there, just to seal that, and we just.
Well, the, the regulation says we can reduce the twelve inch required separation above the groundwater, but in no cases shall it be reduced to less than one inch above groundwater. And in this case, he's a half a foot below groundwater.
Um.
I thought it was above.
No, I'm above water table.[1746.52]
Yeah.
Uh so you've got the water table that I'm calling at the edge of the septic system, but we dug that test hole for, remember we dug that test hole for the uh.
I do.
Um if you look at that one, the groundwater observation. Yeah, we're at ninety seven four.
Yeah.
So we got a, I was able to get an inch.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
They didn't spend a lot of time reviewing everything.
That that's okay, no, no, and that's it. It was actually Todd's idea out in the field to to dig a hole where roughly the tank was, so it was a great idea. We showed that on the plan, um and we were able to, you know, document that we could get the that separation. Obviously, still doesn't meet the twelve inches, but it's better than nothing. We're proposing um uh H twenty monolithic tanks, so you've got the, you know, the single pour tank and you've got a H twenty. We kind of need the H twenty for multiple reasons, buoyancy, as well as the ability to be able to drive on them as well, so. They've been used, it's being used for multiple reasons.
Marlin nineteen inches or twenty two a week in Marlin.
Yeah, yeah, it's a wet, it's just wet, it's a very wet site, and that was only, you know, less than a month ago, so.
And you said it was too bad, right?
Yeah.
It did, it's good over there though, the whole corner, everything looks really good over there.
Yeah, I tried to go right.
So as far as procedurally, uh we'll revise the plan. Um I um probably should uh speak with uh Todd in the meantime as well, just to make sure he, you know, I know he's mentioned a few issues that he had. Which I believe I can address. I'll obviously um address the the secondary treatment, that's simple on my end. Um and then as far as procedurally goes, is this something that, there's no affected butters or I don't believe any uh notifications to any butters. So I didn't, I just wanted to know, is this something that I have to come to another meeting? Or is this something that procedurally Todd just brings to you and you grant the the local upgrades, how does that work?
Oh, we pretty much authorize you to.
You have, but I've never been inside the fifty foot buffer with a septic system, so.
It would have to, that would have to be a board.
Yeah, just because it's a wetland.
Of course, of course.
Yeah, if it's a pond or wetland.
Yeah, we haven't had one yet that's been varying.
Well, you know.
I'll leave I'll leave it honestly, I I would leave it up to Todd if, once you submit the plan, if, cause he'll review it first, obviously. If um you know, if things are, if there's some questionable things that Todd has concerns over that you'd be able to answer better. Then, you know, I I just have to let you know to come to the meeting.
Okay.
I don't see why we need to, you already came and explained what's going on up there.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, understand what the board is looking for.
Oh, of course, yeah, no, we really appreciate your time.
You'll have an easier time getting to conservation too, if if you can show that you're trying to use some some extra nitrogen.
There's no question. This plan was not submitted to conservation, the only plan that was submitted to conservation was kind of a conceptual layout. This is obviously much more detail, um which we will be providing to them. Um but the idea was with conservation was to try to get um was to try to get some of the enforcement orders lifted. So they wanted, they wanted to at least get the the filings in, um and to do that, we couldn't. At the time, we didn't even have the sieve back on the perk to be able to do the design. So we kind of based it off of a conceptual size and submitted it. So the plan that we submitted to conservation, we will now update them with this as well, which will be obviously in even further detail for them. But I appreciate your time and uh obviously, if any uh any questions, just feel free to reach out. Thank you very much. Have a good night, guys.
Yeah, I'm gonna take uh these these uh people next, um. You wanna come on up? I don't know which one you're waiting on.
Twenty one seventy six Pleasant, twenty one seventy six Pleasant, it's next on the agenda anyway, so. I see this is timing is perfect.
Alright, once again.
So uh these are the neighbors to twenty one seventy six Pleasant Street, um oh.
Can you just, Mister Chandler, out of respect to um your wife, can we just wait?
Absolutely, I prefer it, yep. I was gonna.
She's actually, she's been actually more involved in it.
I I prefer that, yeah.
How to get it, you're not there yet?
Yeah.
Are you?
I'm sure also he's hard, you have to stare at him.
Okay, just give me your ankles.
Claw deroges, leash deroges.
Okay.
Uh Bill Pollack's next door neighbor.
Okay. What's going on?
Sorry.
Oh, you wanna go first?
No, you can go. No, no, I would just, I just wanna lease her at the table, that's all.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um so as you're aware, we've got the situation with the house with the orange stickers on it on twenty one seventy six. Um these neighbors have been more than supportive of um the owner of the property and helping him in any way possible. And uh we're doing our best, they had a company that was in there, um doing some cleanup. Uh things weren't quite going the way we wanted them to, uh they reached out to another company. They get rid of the first company, the second company's been in there and moving a lot faster and a lot more manpower down there and moving forward. Uh they've been emptying out several of the rooms that we had to get rid of a lot of stuff today, I believe. The refrigerators and freezers are the like the last big thing to go. And uh now we're at a point of, okay, now the rest of the house is, like you don't need masks anymore or suits to go in. Booties is about the only thing you really need to go in there. And uh he's right now in a hotel and insurance is paying for him to be in a hotel, but that's gonna run out next Tuesday. So they're kind of anxious to figure out a way to get him back into the house as soon as possible. There's still a lot of stuff in the house, the basement is full to the brim and the second floor is full to the brim. The first floor has got room to move around in now. There is some stuff that the owner wants to keep, um but it's very minimal compared to the amount of stuff in the house. He's willing to keep this much and it's, you know, we went through today with him and he only wanted a few items. I I I had a whole trash bag ready to go and he didn't, he only wanted a few things, so he's willing to let go of everything that's in there, so. And you wanna add?
Sure, yeah, so um a few things, the. I I understand, cause I've been involved in these situations in the past, that uh sometimes it's difficult to let things go. But it seems like Mister Pollack is willing, he's made that uh crossed that line, which is commendable. And I know you've been very supportive, you should be nice for that. However, I would seriously encourage that, I believe that in discussions today, uh we limit the personal belongings that he wants to keep to maybe one room. Um it's a big house, if we fill a room with personal belongings, then that stuff can disperse around the house. And uh he's less apt to relapse, uh you know, after he's back acclimated.
Agreed.
Uh since we talked today, uh the company that you've hired, Trauma Twenty Four, has called me and said that you have a uh desire to save some items that you could possibly sell at a later date. So I think that in a reasonable perspective, um if we can get a second room of items that you think are of value, that you wanna keep. And I think that is more than fair from a town's perspective, from the homeowner's perspective, and it will generate some income. I mean, there are two rooms in that house, you could put a lot of stuff in, as we know, because they were full.
Right, we thought it, yeah.
But I really think the rest of it all needs to go.
I I'm in full agreement with that, and I think Bill will be too.
Alright, because as I said today, we have three different problems there. We have a problem with with, from my perspective, with uh hazardous means of egress. We have a fire problem with accumulation of combustibles, and then we have the obvious health problem associated with it. So, all that said, if the homeowner and you are in agreement, I think that would be a wise way to move forward. The problem is, that's not a lot gonna happen by Tuesday, is it? I don't think so.
Trauma's very good.
They are very good.
They fill up the dumpsters, they drop it in the drugstore.
Yeah, they they are very, they're motivated.
Okay.
Um if we could work out an agreement where maybe he only has access to, you know, make it safe. Where it's not gonna be a combustible concern, um where he could stay just in that first floor.
Okay.
And then we get the second floor safe enough, where they're still working while he's living there in the basement.
So there are a few other variables. In order for us or the board or for me to recommend to the board that we lift the order. We need to have running water and we need to have functional uh toilet facilities.
Okay.
That's gonna be outside of Trauma Twenty Four's um purview.
And smoke detectors, too.
In addition to that, that that would be health related items, okay?
It has to be, like you were saying, it has to be the minimum standards.
Right, right, yeah, but that's understood, no, we wanna see for him as well.
So I'm going down the big three, so that's the health and the maintenance, okay? From a building perspective, I need all means of egress accessible. That means the porches that were moved off the back of the house, I need a landing and stairs there.
Even if it's temporary, right?
Right, even if it's temporary.
Okay.
Um the back portion of the home, which I'm not willing to lift the uh condemning right now, the back portion that we discussed today, that needs to be completely blocked off.
Okay.
There was a separate apartment at the back of the house.
I would like to see it demolished, if the homeowner wants to obligate a repair and get a contractor involved and get a building permit. I'll roll with it, it's not my decision to make.
Okay.
Um it's not structurally unsafe, however, um it it's in pretty bad condition.
Yeah, it's kinda neat.
So that would have to be sealed off, okay, so that would be from my perspective. Now, from a fire perspective, uh the fire department would have to make sure that anything that remains there while he's there isn't gonna impede their emergency responses. And they're also gonna want working smoking carbon dioxide detectors.
Okay.
So that seems like a pretty tall order, they get done by Tuesday.
And it's also almost heating season, so you have to make sure your heat is right.
Yeah.
Right, I think we can get a few weeks down the road, you're actually up. So I wanna be, I wanna be reasonable, but I also wanna be realistic.
Right.
Um I know we talked today about whether there was any veteran services that could possibly help, and you said he wasn't qualified for it, right?
Yeah, he's over, he's over the limit.
So I don't know if there's any other ideas at the table, but how old is John? Eighty eight?
Is Bristol elders gonna have?
We were in contact with them, um to be honest with you, they they have not come through for us.
Yeah, sometimes they have resources, sometimes.
Yeah, they have, they have not come through for us, I said to her, I said, oh, well, how about.
Like they're into cleaning?
No, well, not only that, but even, you know, even the financial.
Temporary housing is all we need at this point, so.
And I said, um I said, well, how about help with this fuel, fuel assistance, and she goes, oh, what what's that? It's okay, I'll keep working.
With the with the holiday weekend, I can conceivably put a target date on this of between ten and fourteen days until you're to the point where I just said. So that puts us a week after Tuesday. So I think we need to be realistic in a sense that no one wants to put him on the street, but by the same token. We can't allow him into a, back into a building that still isn't the condition that it's in. So does he have enough resources to pay his way for a week in a hotel?
I think I think we could.
I mean, I'm sure we can make it work.
Yeah.
I mean, I, you know, I I it's it's unfortunate, but we we can't take a bad situation and make it worse.
No, and I I agree, we wanna keep on going forward.
Right.
Um.
And the landings on the back step, there's two doors, there's one door that actually leads to the back of the main room.
He knows that one, yeah.
And then there's the one door that actually leads to the apartment. As far as the temporary stairs, can we limit that to just that one door?
Yeah, so once, so that if you're facing that area, it's the one on the right.
Yes.
But once you get in there, I want that plywooded off so you can't get into that back block, okay? And that would completely segregate that part of the house.
Yep, that's not an issue.
The only thing, the the uh fire department will probably want a smoke detector in there, just in case anything happens, he will be alerted, even though he can't get in there, okay?
Can it be like a battery operated one?
Yeah.
I feel like there was one there already, but it was just hanging, but.
Do you know if everything else is working, your water, your?
Well, everything's been shut off.
Yeah, right now, everything's shut off, we have to have everything turned back on, but prior to that, um yeah, there was, there was.
Yeah.
Four people living there full time, so he had everything from the best of my knowledge.
And you will need an electrician to get the power turned back on.
Okay.
That's not just a phone call by me, an electrician actually has to come in and make sure nothing has been damaged on the inside before the service can be re-energized.
Okay.
Is there gas to the house?
It's been shut off.
What's the uh, what's the plan for the basement, how are the items down there?
It's packed.
Gonna be disposed of or? For the most, for the most part, yeah, if it's not something that uh that he can turn over and sell for himself, then we're pretty much getting rid of it. And even if it's questionable, we've been getting rid of a lot of other stuff. Even if it, even if it has some value, it's just, it's more important, I think, at this point to get him his space back. As opposed to uh, you know, and he he's been very good as far as uh. Yeah, we need to access, well, he was probably tell you anyway, access the electrical panel. Oh, absolutely, and the boiler, yeah.
Yeah.
I think just be before he could.
Right.
Move back in, he definitely needs access to the furnace, the electrical panel, if there's a separate hot water heater, that's straight up for fire safety.
Yeah, Trauma Twenty Four is very um.
Yeah, we're very happy.
Very knowledgeable, they they're they're a professional company, so they know what needs to happen. Um but I just wanna, I wanna be honest with with ourselves and say what can actually happen in what amount of time, you know? We've we've lost quite a bit of time and and that's nobody's fault, it's just the way things, you know, happen.
It just didn't progress like we wanted it to, but we're still on it.
Yeah.
So on another note, uh they borrowed some pink bags from us and they were able to, it was over twenty bags worth of um. Clothing and soft textiles went out and they've asked for more bags, um.
Need more, so that's no.
Yep, and um obviously, we let textile, it's like we know that they were putting out a lot of bags, so they were ready for it, so. And um, yeah, there's a lot, he doesn't need all the clothing that's in there and he was parting with it, so.
Yeah, no, he is, he's doing very well.
For no reason to fill a dumpster if it's usable somewhere else, so.
Okay, so.
Anything else?
You would call for an inspection, obviously.
I I think that I could, uh this is just an option, um I know hotels can get expensive if he wants to look into renting a trailer or something for a few weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think that this board, the Board of Selectmen, would be amendable, because we do have a bylaw that prohibits that. But under the circumstances, I think we'd be amendable to allow that to stay on the property until this is done.
And obviously, if we recommend it, I think it would carry.
So that might be an option that could be, uh you know, had.
Small trailer.
Right, right, that you can fill.
Yeah, if you consider temporary housing, I have no problem with that, I think that's actually, I was gonna suggest it, but.
Yeah.
Cause if there isn't anything available in town that he could not like a shelter or something.
No.
Plus, then that way, he's there, he's on a travel from wherever he is, you know.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, the season's over, the kids are back at school, you might barely get a trailer, it'd be inexpensive, so, okay?
Alright.
Good?
Yeah, I think so, we got enough, we're gonna see him.
And I know people have thanked you, but I think everyone needs to commend both of you for what you've done down there.
The amount of time that you spent.
Yeah, you guys have been very supportive as well.
Really good about this, so.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all, have a good night.
You too.
I'm sure we'll talk to him on.
Okay.
Yeah, I told him.
I heard that. Okay, good. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, goodnight. Okay, well, we're down on honor, I guess, one fifty eight Lincoln Ave. Down that one, okay.
Bad topic.
So one fifty eight Lincoln Ave is up by the um top end of the street. There's a house in the front that's two family, two two apartments. Behind it is a garage, and then the garage is, it's rented out, split in half, and there's two tenants that rent garage space. And then behind the garage space is another tenant who is renting just space for storage. The issue becomes that apparently um he drives a van bus thing for somebody. And I guess like he's been sleeping in his van on the property, um from what we understand. Um there have been some issues with the landlord, uh some of his mail being stolen, all different stuff going on. Um but basically, at this point, we need to um send him a letter telling him he can't be on, he can't sleep on the property. From what he's telling us, between when his work hours and this and that, it's like from midnight to four AM that he's like there. And then he's up and gone, cause he's gotta be in like Plymouth for six AM or something like that, so he's he's not, he's not there for eight hours a day, but there's no sanitary facilities. Um I guess he used to get water from the house with the garden hose, but I guess they've stopped him from doing that, so. It's a situation that we can't necessarily allow to continue.
I would say both, so if you're gonna send a letter, you send a letter to him and the owner of the property, cause the violation's on their property.
Well, part of this is the owner of the property wants to evict him, he wants us to evict him for him.
We can't, we're not gonna do that, but if we send a letter saying there is a violation on your property, uh you have to correct it. And we also tell this individual, you cannot reside on this property in that in that, unless you're a build dwelling. You can let them hash it out that way, but if you have to go with the court and if you fines, it's both at this time. Cause at one point, there was some kind of agreement, a rental agreement, so that uh the person that let him on the property is in violation as well.
And I I made the owner well aware of that.
And supposedly, the agreement allowed him to sleep on the property, so.
The the other thing for.
The owners are falling off.
The other thing for the record.
Someone in the property would.
No, it's gonna take you.
No toilet facilities, right?
You don't want to let that settle matter.
The other thing for the record is neither the Board of Health nor my department has witnessed him actually sleeping on the property. This is only being told to us. Only this week, which is why it's on the agenda, did the police department tell me that they believe he's sleeping there. But other than that, we've not been able to verify that he's that he's sleeping there. We have met with him, he did make it perfectly clear that he had a lease agreement with this property owner to rent space in the yard. Which, by the way, I wouldn't recommend anyone do that, okay, it's also a violation of zone.
He does have a small chain link fence enclosure that he had a.
Pit bull.
Oh, I thought you said it wasn't a pit bull.
It's a pit bull.
Okay, he he has a dog in the in the kennel, and people said, oh, the dogs, whatever, we've checked out, he had shade, had water, the dog was healthy, um wasn't aggressive toward us, so. But it was in a locked cage, so.
So part of the reason I haven't been able to verify he's sleeping there is I haven't been indicted in between midnight and four AM, so, uh,
If anybody would like to drive it.
Buy that, um, but I think at this point, now that the police department has given me, um, uh, notice that someone is sleeping there, even sporadically, I think it's appropriate, as you indicated, to send two letters, one to the property owner and one to this individual.
I would agree with that, I think you had a great idea to send it to the property owner, and, uh, he's in violation of running it without. I do have one, fines can be assessed, like I said, just issue the fines to both parties, but you can't get them fined.
I do have one short of question and comment, though. He really doesn't have a residence there, he's, he is indeed sleeping in his van. Is he getting mail there?
No, we have a P O box or something, something, that he's, yes, we do.
So we have an address for him? Okay.
He, he gave us his address.
Okay. I wasn't aware.
Cause that was part of the problem in the beginning, it was like, all right, how do we reach this guy, you know, without just hanging around waiting for him to show up, you know? So leaving an envelope on the, under the windshield wiper on the van was not necessarily the way to do it either, so.
And in speaking with this guy, he seems like a stand-up person trying to work, trying to, uh, do what's right. Uh, if he's sleeping there, he just, he's down on his luck.
He's saying he's been trying desperately to get another apartment, but he only wants like a one-room apartment, but he needs to keep his dog. And the dog seems to be the major hiccup for a lot of landlords for allowing him in, so.
I, I, I think as far as the property owner, it's highly inappropriate to expect the Board of Health to do the eviction for him. That's a civil matter that needs to be taken to court, and I have no problem telling them that.
No, we did tell him that.
I, I did tell him that, yeah.
Yeah.
I actually told him when he came into the office that you were equally his fault here.
Absolutely.
So he didn't like that, but that was the truth.
Right.
And it's a very short timeframe, again, you just, if they can't correct it, you issue fines and we'll take it further than that.
Right. Right.
And if, if all this gentleman asked, the, the tenant, if you will, asked to say, well, you rented me space, well, now that the property owner legally has to make reasonable accommodations.
Well, he couldn't find the lease either, we told him to find the lease, and he said he couldn't find it.
I think he did tell us he's paid through December of this year.
November, yeah.
Yeah, November and December, right, so.
But the owner says he paid through November of eighteen, not November of nineteen, and it was all cash, and there's no receipts, and it's like, where are?
And so, he actually, he actually has mortgages, right?
Oh, yeah.
So that's, that's even worse, the person acknowledges, there's some kind of, some kind of form of rental agreement, which is a violation if you, if it's, doesn't even meet minimum housing code.
Right.
Okay. Let me add a little drop though.
Thank you.
Joint letter, uh, okay. I'm going on to three F. Zero William Street, map fifteen lot forty square.
So this one is similar to twenty-one seventeen William Street, except this is a vacant lot that, uh, they are just starting the process for, and they went in, delineated the wetlands, and identified the hundred-foot buffer, and there is no place on the lot that they can put a septic system that's over a hundred feet from the wetland. So before they went any further, and obviously, I can't schedule a perk and all the rest of it, they want to know how, how we handle this. Is it a buildable lot? Is it not a buildable lot? Can they get variances? Where do we go? And like I said, we haven't had any of these in the two years I've been here, and now we got two of them in the same day, you know, so.
The buffer's halfway across William Street.
I told him I wanted to see on the sketch, I wanted to see the, the building setbacks to see where the house was gonna go, because obviously, there's conservation issues here too, but I thought it would be helpful to see what they had for room for a house. I haven't done any deed research to find a whole, when this lot was created, if they created it on hardship, or any of that kind of stuff. I just need the surveyors and the engineer working on it, so.
Have you done, do you really get a perk with high water?
Well, it comes up pretty good, but that neighborhood's not, I mean, this is literally like diagonally across the street from twenty-one seventeen William Street, so, um, we had a sieve for a thirty-minute park, so, yeah.
However, there's a big difference between this lot and the one on twenty-one seventeen.
There is.
The other one was developed and improved upon, this one was not.
Brand new.
Nor was it ever improved upon, so.
Is it after, right on the corner, the Cedar Street there?
No, if you came down Main Street, um, you come to Williams, it's like, what, diagonally across about a telephone pole or two up the street?
No, okay, I know where it is.
Well, there's a whole long stretch of woods, and this is just one of the lots in there, so.
Where are they gonna put the system?
That's why we, they asked that, you know, we'd kick it around before we'd take any, um.
They, they would really, really, really struggle even to keep it outside the fifty, I mean, struggle to keep it outside the fifty.
But it's new construction, for sure. The other, the other one walks the line, this one is clearly new construction.
New construction, you can't, I think, a new construction, you can't, you, uh, you don't have four feet of, uh, previous material.
Well, we, we'll assume for the moment, we get, somewhere on the lot, we would get four feet of suitable material, would the board allow, entertain having a system within a hundred feet of a wetland for new construction?
I don't, I don't see the hardship, like, if there was something existing, for myself, if there was something existing, obviously, you have to make it work. Over here, we're gonna impact something that Really, uh, really don't need to impact it.
I, I, I mean, have you done stuff for conservation, not in the, in, by elsewhere?
We're gonna, you, you have to meet the distance for the, is it fifty-five feet?
I don't know, so you need to conservation.
Oh, I, I would agree with him. Yeah.
Well, you started with us, so obviously, we would involve Charlie.
So you don't need that, so you would rather see where everything is.
Right, if, if this board said, yeah, we would entertain it, then I'd say, all right, now go see Charlie with the setbacks and the building department for where this house is gonna go, cause I think by the time you throw in a front yard setback, and then you put a house, the house is literally gonna be like twenty feet away from the wetlands, probably, you know?
Fifty-five feet from the centerline road, you're talking about, yeah, you're, you're into.
Yeah, and there's the fifty-foot buffer, right, so you're.
Pat, you're, you're closer to the twenty-five foot.
Yes, the house is in the twenty-five foot buffer, so.
I, I don't see that happening through, again, if it was existing, if there was something existing there, but there's nothing there.
Unless they can show something a little more creative, like this just shows a lot, uh.
Well, that's when he stopped, because he's like, I can't perk, you know, I need permission to do a perk, and I can't authorize a perk within the hundred-foot left.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, yeah.
So I would need this board to say, yeah, go ahead and perk it, and then if we go in and perk it, then we can figure out if we can take the next step, but they don't wanna sink money in if they're not gonna.
The sign is probably vacant, well, it's been vacant for that reason.
For a long time, too, probably.
If you want to perk and stay out of the fifty, but within the hundred, I mean, you could try, but I wouldn't put money into it.
If you can get out of, if you, if you can stay out of fifty, yeah.
So you get, uh, this board would allow him to do perks outside the fifty, but inside the hundred for new construction?
Don't the, uh, towns drainage cross the street into that property?
Well, that's what it looks like, they get a catch base and they're disheveled, so.
I'm pretty sure as others, drains into that lot.
You see a little bit of the swale there, but there's no wetlands in that swale, but.
You're gonna be that distance on that side, you're gonna be the wetlands, the wetlands are so close, and this side, you can't put.
So you get conservation, Board of Health, and building, there's, there's three things here.
You're gonna have to tuck everything in this corner.
Yeah, everything. Subtak, house, everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, just a little background, the owner called me about this a while ago, and was upset because they were paying taxes for a buildable lot, and they were finding out that they may not be able to build on, and I had indicated to them that the tax assessor can do whatever they want, it doesn't mean you have a buildable lot. You first need to meet zoning requirements, you need to meet Board of Health, Conservation, those are the big three. Um, and I said, based on what I can see, it doesn't look like your lot is going to be favorably looked upon for, for building a house. So she, um, then decided to hire an engineer to see if what I was saying was accurate, or if there was indeed, um, a buildable lot, and here we are today.
Yeah, several people kicked the tires and came to us, and it's like, hey, can I put a septic, and it's like, you gotta donate the wetlands, we can't answer anything until the wetlands are donated, so.
Right. So.
I will say that.
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't think we need a formal vote.
I mean, if we, if we, and this is where what, what a health agent said earlier is important, is this is a new construction property. If we stop to allow perks, we're leaving above for zone, what are we gonna do with subdivisions or anything else that comes up? So I understand that each one can be looked at independently, but I think we're, we're trying to not allow, not that we're trying not to allow building, but we're trying to at least control the building.
Yeah.
So to allow building on a property like this, it just, it doesn't help.
Yeah, but the responsibility is to resource areas as well, why, why would we, myself, an impact, I mean, there really was no need for it.
But our Board of Health regulations are not to stop building, they are to protect wet resource areas and all the wells in town, and the, the surface water supplies and all the rest of it, so.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I probably chose the wrong words, but, you know, we, we have some control, especially with a lot like this.
And in the end, they still have to put a treatment, like the water's in here, for really, for a while, yeah?
But it, but like you said, once you do it, now it's precedent setting, and the next one comes in, well, you let them perk with them a hundred feet, so, let me do it.
It's my fear.
Yeah.
I, I, I.
So it sounds like a no?
Okay.
No perks within a hundred feet, end of story. He wants to meet up with a neighbor or something.
Not, not for new.
Construction.
Not for new construction.
Yeah.
And there's, there's no evidence of any prior structure on the property, you know?
All right, let's go.
Uh, staying with our regulations for new construction, uh, no perks are allowed within a hundred feet of the wetland buffer.
Seth's that was a motion, second. Motion's made, second, any further discussion? Seeing on all the bed.
Aye.
All both, extensions, carries, thank you. Okay. I guess we had an issue with, uh, Tom Ferry at the session with the office, that people are dropping off yard waste such as stumps, tree butts, and tree trunks, uh, we don't have the facilities, oh, here we go. For that at this time, and I think he wanted us to add it to our list of, uh, non-acceptable items, so.
Yes. Yes, somebody came in and dumped it before the attendant realized what was going on, so.
Cause you need a grant for that, not just, that costs big money.
So we have a lot of them there at the moment that he just wants it added to our transfer station rates if the board sort of feels that way, that, you know, tree butts, trunks, or stumps are allowed.
Sounds pretty hard to me.
Yeah, yeah.
No motion? Chairman, I'll make the motion that we add to our transfer station, um, items. Unacceptable ways. Unacceptable items, um, stumps, tree butts, and tree trunks. Second. Okay, motion made, second, all in favor? Aye. Both? Yes. Next one is to review, discuss an act, appoint Seth Baker as Tobacco Control Coordinator. Um, Mr. Baker is taking the place of Marilyn Edge as our Tobacco Control Officer. And he sent a nice letter in, if you guys take a moment to read it. The problem is, we can't appoint, we can recommend appointment by the, to, to the Board of Selectmen, and, um, I, I would have liked to met him, but, uh, was anyone met?
He called the office this afternoon and asked, said that he couldn't be here tonight, but he can come in if the board wants to meet him. Um, he did wanna schedule a conference call for, um, some point next week, just to touch base with us, see what we need, if anything. Um, I figured you guys probably wanted to.
I like the touch base, cause I think it's time now for, he probably has backlog, but he's probably gonna do his inspections, and then, and then compliance, yeah, and then do the compliances, so.
He was actually out with, I know.
Got a lot of catch-ups probably to do.
Mr. Chairman, I'll recommend that, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Selectmen appointment of Seth Baker as the Tobacco Control Coordinator.
Second. Motion made, second, appoint Seth Baker, I recommend appointment of Seth Baker, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, carries, thank you.
And maybe invite him in for one of the September meetings, but for the first, if you can make it in the second, just to say hi.
Yeah, it'd be great. I think I asked before, did we cancel our September, first meeting in September, we did, all right?
We have not.
Mama's scheduled after that?
Uh, I actually will not, I'm here.
I don't think it means you can't, we just haven't yet.
Cause I may, we got a conference.
The, uh, any warrant office needs to be in by September twentieth, so, uh, I'm not quite sure if we can, it's too late to cancel it anyway, because it's not on the agenda. So I think we'll be meeting the second and fourth week of September as usual. Um, and until such time, I think we'll get everything done, we will, uh, that we wanted to do as, as a board, um, to bring us into the twentieth century, hopefully, we'll be able to go on one meeting a month, like we said we were gonna do in July of twenty seventeen, wasn't it? Some, somewhere around there?
I mean, it's, it's a longer meeting, but for all the routine business, of course, if anything comes up, and, you know, as we've done, certainly.
Special.
We've always made the adjustments.
But special meetings.
Yep. Yeah, there's a few things that we need to get out of the way for us, but I, I, you know, um, I, I think we've been able to successfully go on, and we always open for another meeting anyway if we have to, so. All right, all business, triple E update.
We did have, um, an email come in from a resident who was concerned that fall sports are commencing.
And they're looking for the town to spray the, like, the, where the edges, the ground spraying.
Uh, just takes a call to, uh, Bristol County Spito Control, and they need specific addresses or locations, and during their weekly spraying, if they're not doing it already, it will be added.
So if it's the baseball complex,
Mm-hmm.
Baseball league would need to contact them, yeah?
County. Nope, we can, as a
Let's, let's tell them, tell them property.
Yeah, so it's, it's a town that's not property.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess they can get any out.
You can, they may already be doing it, because I know that areas of, um, more media concern, any swampy areas, heavy wood, wetland type areas, they were just doing it automatically at this point anyway, given the, um, situation.
I think we can, uh, I mean, we can ask Mallory to reach out.
Just say, do we have the authority to call them?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, we can, okay.
Yep.
I have been doing that for, we, we've been doing that for a length, like, all the ballpox, and we just know that, so there's no charge, cause it's technical, so.
I've been doing that too. We do it. No, no, no. Uh, Priscilla's just the director for the Bristol County Spito Control, she actually lives locally too, so, should be aware, yeah.
I love that. We had another call this afternoon from, um, Derek Costa, the, um, business manager at Bristol Aggie. He wanted to advise us that they will be doing ground spraying over there Friday, so they decided Friday because kids aren't in school, very short staff, where they'll be in the holiday weekend, and they're gonna make sure all the animals are inside, all the feed troughs and water, everything will be emptied and covered. They just wanted Board Health to know that they would be doing that, and if you guys had any other concerns, they sent over, this is who's gonna be doing the spraying, and this is like chemicals.
And they're in the chemical.
Yeah, what was the name of the text? That's excellent, because they're out there, they're out there, their students are out there, so. Why don't we, why don't? So let's go see if they do all the town.
Top stock.
Auction recreation areas.
Well, this is Orkin that they're hiring.
Yeah, they have to hire, so the, the county will not spray the school fields without, there's a long list of things that have to be done prior to, and at this point, if the school's back in session, they will not, uh, they're, it's, it's substantial what they need to do.
Well, they need an emergency order from M D A R in order to be able to spray, and they're waiting for that order to come down, so.
Nor, nor to spray any, any school, it's a big undertaking, so.
Okay, well, we'll do the best we can, yeah?
So I don't need to notify him of anything you guys are good with what they're doing?
As far as triple E, second, state completed their second aerial spraying, uh, it's a conference call tomorrow.
Triple E?
Thank you.
Total effectiveness of the aerial spraying won't be known for, um, probably another week and a half, two weeks. Um, but, just because they
Killed two of my goldfish.
Really?
I forgot, I forgot.
Um, I think the weather was far more favorable in the second round of aerial spraying, so hopefully it was effective.
Yeah.
Um, just as a, a note, even though aerial spraying was done, it helps reduce the risk, it does not eliminate the risk. Um, so, all of the, uh, the dusted on prior, uh, restrictions will certainly still remain in effect.
Well, that's I'd be, I'd be offended, so, yeah.
It's encouraged, um, sorry, um, it's encouraged to, uh, to continue to use bug repellent, and, uh, and wear long sleeves, long pants, like that, so, until the first high frost, so four hours of, um, twenty-eight degrees or below, continuous four hours, so, it'll be, be a while, yeah?
It's really serious. We also, we want to forward, regarding town field recreation areas closure. Is there something that came up, uh, other than we're not chasing people off the fields? Um, it was posted, for your own safety, uh, that you restrict your activities to our town recreation areas between, uh, dawn and dusk, when mosquitoes are most active. Signage was put up by the chairman of the Parks and Rec Department, and we understand it does say no exceptions. Uh, we were hoping that it would be a deterrent for most people to, uh, acknowledge the fact that a case of triple E could probably kill you. So, as a warning, uh, they are out there, but, uh, we will not be chasing you out of the areas. We're not your mother, and we're not your father, I would hope to think that, you know, the threat of triple E would be enough to heed warning and take protective measures, uh, to protect yourself and your children, so. There's nothing else I can say about it, you're out there at your own risk, and triple E is out there, and has been four human cases so far, Massachusetts. It is very close, it, uh, Fairhaven was, I believe, where the, one person was from. So, enough said.
So is this board looking to leave in place the dust to dawn?
Until the first.
Closure lost?
Yep.
Um, moving on to revised kennel bylaw, uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion that we table this, cause it doesn't, like, this is my last copy that I sent out. I had added a few sentences.
Second. Wait, what, do you mean?
I said something, yep.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, motion made, anyway, we're not gonna get it on the special town meeting anyway, it's too late, so it has to go to the planning board, and then we'll have to hold a, uh, public hearing and all of that, so. It'll be going on the annual, which is probably a better time anyway, when there's, uh, not a majority, but more people hopefully in attendance to, to act on it and give their input, so. Anyway, motion made second to table the kennel bylaw, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. We got some letters.
Yeah, we're on, uh, K nine license renewal.
Unless, K nine license renewal.
So, um, we drafted up a letter, uh, two different letters, one was for the dog license, there's a lot of people that haven't renewed their dog licenses, and there's also about a handful of people who haven't renewed their kennel license, so we drafted a letter. We were unaware that the Board of Health was supposed to follow up if people didn't license their dog, apparently it says in the dog license renewal, that the Board of Health will do something, so we kind of started putting it together. Um, we came up with some stuff, we ran it by the town clerk, she wanted some changes to it, um, which we tweaked some of it, but, um, the biggest issue and why we're bringing it to this board is, um, we put in there that the, the fee will be not less than fifty dollars per dog per day, if you don't license your dog, and her comment is it's not in our general bylaws that we can find that amount. Uh, it was referred to her that it's in the Mass General laws, and she seems to think it needs to be in our general bylaws also. Um, and that's why it's here, the same thing for the kennel, we said that a hundred dollars per dog per day if you don't, um, get vaccinated, and, uh, fifty dollars a day per dog for the kennel license thing, so.
I think the only way you can do that is if we have a, we adopt that M G L as a non-criminal disposition, and then it'll be part of, uh, bylaw versus rules and regulation, uh, um, regulations and bylaws, do you know what I'm trying to say?
I do.
You have to adopt it first.
So adopt it as the Board of Health, or adopted it like town?
Adopted Board of Health.
Okay.
Uh, as, for, where you can find it non, as a non-criminal disposition, and then as the bylaw reads, I mean, as the, yeah, the bylaws read, you can find bylaws and regulations.
Well, that would have, have to be in addition to the general bylaws.
No, so, like, right now, if we can actually find through the food code, swimming, tanning, because we adopted those.
The state sanitary code.
Yeah, with a non, for a non-criminal disposition. So the way the bylaws read, it says, uh, um, a non-criminal disposition can be issued by bylaw or regulation.
Was it a bylaw? Is it, okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, is it a bylaw or a regulation?
Did you, did you check with Mallory?
No, I, it's just only happened.
We're gonna send it to council.
Yeah, that's it, I would have Mallory, Mallory check it and then send it to town council, and they'll be able to.
Alright, when I spoke with David Day regarding the fines, he mentioned to me, I asked him if it, the Mass General law is applicable, if we don't have it in our general bylaws. And he said to me, unless it's specific, or it mentions in the Mass General law that you have to accept it, uh, then you have to accept it, if it doesn't say anything, you know, but we'll send it to him.
Yeah, and obviously, so the thing is now, this happened like April fifteenth, and the letters haven't gone out yet to these people, so.
Is that the last one I sent out, with Sue's tweets?
Well, we haven't made these tweets yet, yeah.
They, this is Sue's tweets.
I did.
Oh, you made tweets.
So I have copies of that in here, though, again.
Okay, so, I mean, see, there's a lot to go on here, this is gonna be something like five hundred letters we get to send out, um, obviously we're not gonna do them certified, because it's a lot of them. But, um, kennels is like, say, there's only a handful, so that would be certified, but.
The question I, question I had is, one of them says, if you have questions, contact the Board of Health.
I think I changed that.
You do have one of them, not the other one, so I don't know if that was due, so it just seems kind of funny that you would contact us when we have nothing to do with it.
Well, it also seems funny to me the little ones have to send out the letter, but.
Right, we, that would be like the.
I have a question, Mister Chairman. So, this seems like an awfully cumbersome problem.
You're right.
We have, we have the ci, the town clerk involved, we have the Board of Health involved, we have the A C O involved, and it seems to me like we have an awful lot of people who want licensing dogs. Is there a reason for that? Is this a, a local issue? Does this problem occur all over?
Well, it occurs everywhere, but not, I don't think to the extent that we have it, and the fact that our fines aren't big. I know Satan. If after X amount a day, you don't license your dog, it's an extra twenty-five dollars, you get another month if you don't do it, it's an extra fifty dollars, and then, I know like Rehoboth, they attach your license after it's not done, if you don't do it.
Yeah, Bridgewater actually mails you a citation in the mail, saying twenty-five dollar fine because you didn't license your dog.
I've never. Right. Right, it's, it's hard for me to do that if I have nothing to stand on. Cause we've talked about it, and unfortunately, because the town clerk has control over the licenses, I can't even get them, like, if I had somebody in the kennel that I picked up on Wednesday, I mean, on Friday, and I wanted them to get a license, they couldn't do that until Monday morning, which rightfully so, I should hold that dog until Monday morning. But I'm not gonna make somebody cha, charge somebody from Friday night to Mon, to Monday, because our town hall isn't open on Fridays, that's not fair to them. So I said just, to the town clerk, well, could I have a couple licenses, just so, nope, only the town clerk does that. She sends out four or five licenses, I mean, four or five things after, they do at least two or three notices after, so I don't know why people aren't, not that the fines are that big, but.
Well, another thing, remember, we were gonna do was get you access, and I thought that was in the works, was obviously.
Not, not for the, I have access if somebody has a license on, they send it to me through email right now.
But you can't go on their database, if, if you know.
No, I can't go into the database, they just sent me a spreadsheet of who's got dog licenses.
I, why doesn't the A C O have access to a read-only database?
They should, she should, well, I.
But today is with iPad and smartphones, it seems most mundane that we do not have that type of interdepartment communication.
That's a valid point there.
I asked the clerk to get her, and she absolutely not, will not even discuss it.
Or maybe they need to export that database to another file that they will allow her to access.
I think that is part of the state computer, and, so, yeah, actually.
That sounds like a good topic for a management meeting.
It does, yeah, it does, cause it seems to me like the problem here, I mean, aside from lackadaisical dog owners, is there's no S O Ps, standard operating procedure in place, where we act fast and furious, and, like, you just said, they issue a citation the minute the dog is not licensed, and they're expired. Let's do the same thing, but we gotta have that communication between the departments.
That's why I think right now, trying to get a letter out to these people is gonna be almost impossible, we, I think we need to have something set in place for next year, for how to do this, because, yeah.
Totally agree.
At, at this point, by the time.
Because then we can add any laws, yeah.
We're well into October, I'm going two months later, it's really early.
Yeah.
You have to have that mechanism.
I'd rather have a really good.
Find somebody, so, it has to be adopted first.
Solid policy, whatever.
So that's why I think we need to work towards.
Cause you can issue a fine, but if it's not in your.
Right.
Yes, and if it's in your bylaws, it's gonna be first, so you're, stuff like. If you go to court, you get dropped in a second.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll amend this again.
And we're running one by David Gay, obviously, and if we have to amend our regulations to adopt it, we'll have to fill that on an agenda and adopt it.
Yeah.
Maybe we should be putting it on the agenda anyway, like you say, adapt all, the dusted all the other standards, why not that one?
You, you can exchange them, that you're, you're looking to grab that M G L, uh, you're, you're looking to use that M G L to issue a fine if needed, how do we, how do we do that? And it'll go through the steps.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's just adopting it as a non-criminal disposition.
Okay, makes sense to me.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak for them once I get that on, we'll send it up to them, and I'll ask them that question, so.
You need a way to enforce, or, or nothing, you're just gonna wave your finger, or, or.
That's where Stacy's at now.
So do we table this?
Chelsea needs a deal for that. Well, I make motion to table this.
Second. Okay, well, you made the table, I will, my. Four D, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries, thank you very much.
Alright, North Dayton Health concerned, uh, we haven't had calls so much lately, but there is an abandoned building that we are accessing tomorrow, um, I just want the board to be able to speak, that we're still looking into this and, um, still chasing it, it's not gone away, and tomorrow there's another property we've been trying to get into that we're getting into, so.
Awesome.
And hopefully we'll have an update for you at the next meeting, so.
Okay, any more, uh, recent complaints with voters?
Okay. Well, we had one, but it turned out it was a woodchuck, not a rabbit.
A whole big rat.
I saw a dead squirrel up there by the park. Okay, number four, F, review, discuss an act hazardous waste collection, that.
Number four, please.
So, last meeting, we had gotten, um, word from Mike Wedge, which is A C V, A C V Enviro, that he had two dates available in the fall, no one else had any dates available, so we didn't get pricing, we didn't get anything other than he had those dates. He no longer has those dates, so we're looking at spring. So I'm not sure if we wanna try and schedule it for the spring, if we wanna wait and schedule it for next fall, tell you gentlemen what a.
We have money for this for a year, we have music.
Yeah, no, I, I just schedule it for the spring, maybe put it back up to all the vendors again, tell them, like, give us a spring date, it's, I think it's good, cause it's early enough.
Line it up with bulk gate and pickup, and people can just clean up.
Sometime in May.
I mean, that's a good idea.
May.
Give us a ma, a ma, a ma date.
Make a little campaign about it.
Anything in this.
And la, last week in April through the first weekend.
That's right, go to the end of June.
I mean, that gives them like a solid six weeks.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with one, one bit.
No.
Yeah. So.
Okay, I'm thinking probably the weekend and Memorial Days are not good.
Not that, almost the same week we do that, the bulk pickup, so.
Pickup.
It's usually around Memorial Days, the.
Oh, maybe the.
This year, this year we're gonna grow like that.
Yeah, it's usually like the third weekend, May or something, so. We usually talk to Tom Ferry about the date too, for, you know, how it works, you know.
Okay, moving on to number five, any, you know, there's nobody here for pop, anybody have any pop with them, or someone to bring up? The authorized expenditures, number six, payroll and bills paid.
You gentlemen probably wanna look at this, we have a new town nurse, so she's submitting her payroll a little differently, which is nice, it, it breaks down what she did over the, um, course of the month. So with her payroll added to the Board of Health payroll, and also the interns payroll, it was nine thousand seventy dollars for the month, and the bills paid was fifty thousand two hundred and eighteen, so this is the payroll, and these are the bills.
Yeah, she writes it down where you can see open cases, she's not gonna give you specifics, but she can, you can see if there's cases, yeah?
And what cases are open, and what cases are still pending, um, she did have a couple of cases that she had us send letters out to the people, so that she could.
And I know, I know that transition, she worked well with Beth to close off some cases.
Yes, yes.
I need your medical dictionary, so.
Oh, my God, I can't pronounce that.
Oh, yeah, I have no idea what those things are, but.
Just a, uh, sign note, looking at the, um, nursery report there, I think all but one of them is related to tick borne illnesses, so.
Oh, yeah.
Aside from mosquitoes, you also need to be very aware of, uh, ticks.
Yeah, except for this is a full line.
Yeah, quite a few line.
Yep.
Well, that would lead us into this letter that you have here, um.
Go ahead.
Nope, that's you.
You're, you're doing just fine.
No.
A public info, eh?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, this can be on the public info.
No, go ahead, keep going.
Yeah, that's fine, just need one home signed.
Do you assign?
So, um, for those watching at home, there's a, uh, site walk that was scheduled by another board in town, and it's for six P M, and since sun sets at seven P M, um, I am urging that we, they changed the time of the meeting, and as the health agent, the stormwater agent, I will not be attending that meeting, it's thickly wooded, and it's just not a good place to be, so.
And so we've, re, recommended now to reschedule things, seven oh three, I like that.
But they scheduled, on August nineteenth is when they scheduled the site walk, so, you know, um.
So they're gonna, I see, right.
Just after our.
It's gonna be earlier.
So I'm just gonna send that to the town administrator and to the board, so.
Yeah, and if it's a cloudy day, it'll be before seven oh three.
But it's still thick in there, it's probably gonna be well before seven, so.
And to your point about the tick borne illnesses, I mean, the, you know, officials that trudge through the woodlands, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, at this time, no.
As, as a note in regards to that as well, um, you know, it's dust to dawn, that's when mosquitoes are most active, however, mosquitoes are around all day long, and will bite you all day long, especially if you're in heavily wooded areas, swampy areas, they will be active during the day as well, so furthermore, on.
I'm pretty sure they're active over there. I'm out there doing perk tests, and I'm just shh, spraying constantly, yeah.
We don't need a mo, do we need a motion to sign that letter? I don't think so. Are you done with the office manager reports? Stacy, would you like to?
Do you have a response?
No.
Not really, no.
Okay.
Okay. I think you're required probably, we've.
Some of it, yeah.
We've talked about it, so. Anything you wanna add as a, uh, heads up to the residents out there, or any little, a bit of information?
No, I've got a lot of people calling, I had somebody call yesterday, he's doing work on some property somewhere in Maple Street or something, and he heard coyotes, and he was scared to death to continue to do what he was doing. They're gonna be out and go, and they're teaching young to, to, uh, hunt, so they will be out during the day, they do look like German shepherds, so when I say to you that could possibly could be a coyote, don't laugh at me, because in a distance, we grow them big out here, they look like, they look like German shepherds off in the distance.
Was there a dog up by me that got?
Yes, we had somebody, and, uh, a dog now on a forty-five day quarantine, the dog was up to date with its vaccines, but since we can't trap the coyote, or know which coyote it was, cause nobody goes, it was me, um, the dog is on quarantine, they had a flight on the property, and got its ear, and, so because we can't find the animal, we have to quarantine the animal.
What about dead birds?
Birds, I haven't had anybody call, yeah, well, now with triple E, that's a different issue, that, um, where was it? I just read it today, that there was a bird. Yeah, well, now with triple E, that's a different issue that, um, where was it? I just read it today, that there was a bird dead that came positive for triple E.
New Bedford.
New Bedford.
It was at Budwood Park.
Yes.
The state is not, is not taking birds, not testing birds, the only reason why they used to several years ago was to see if triple E was present, we know triple E is present. In discussion today, I don't know the exact specifics, but I think it might have been because it was in the zoo, that, that's why it was sent to the state to be tested.
Okay, so, I mean, that could be a possibility, I haven't had anybody come, I had a complaint about dead birds, so.
I don't think we've received any complaints, have we, with dead birds, man?
No.
I know when I was covering out where you are and in Freetown, we used to get a lot of them.
Yeah. Yeah.
There was a while there that I was getting them, but, um.
It's crazy.
It's not anymore.
So I think, actually, that's good to know, because I think they're picking up birds, um, if they don't have to.
No, if you can't send them to the lab.
Yeah, just, it just recommended to, uh.
And I think just imagine the lab is just going nuts right now.
Yeah, that, that, that was the main intention, I mean, they knew triple E is here, obviously.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Everybody get to reading minutes.
Hey, what about me?
No.
Yeah, you, you've been talking all night long. You got more? That's fine, that's fine. I'm taking my stuff and I'm going home. So we have this.
Formally together?
Form letter that I've been using for a while, that, uh, when I drive by and I see furniture on people's front lawn, uh, discarded all the trash, I leave them this letter, and most of the time, it gets dealt with pretty quickly, we leave with it the transfer station hours and information. However, uh, a couple weeks ago, I got a call about a sectional couch that was out at this particular location. I didn't get over there by the weekend, I show up on Monday, and there's a couple pieces of what looked like a sectional couch, so I left them a letter. Uh, the woman called the office and sent a long email, if anybody wants to read it, it's a full page, but effectively, um, she thought the letter was incredibly unfriendly, in that, you know, pe, some people like the free stuff, and it's a good way to get started when you're a young family, and blah, blah, blah. Uh, but what she wants is that the letter be looked over and revised, but it has a much friendlier tone. So I just want everybody to know this is the letter I sent out, we'll be working on coming up with some less mean language.
Smiley face down, yeah.
Um, so, um, I just want everybody to be aware of it in case anybody heard anything about it, so.
I don't find it.
I don't either, it's a health order.
Yeah.
Something that's unfriendly is a health order. Um.
I think, I think it was all.
Most, most cities and towns don't give you a warning.
Yeah, I know.
I know I wouldn't give you a warning, so.
Yeah, I think, I think, well, that was fine, yeah.
Just imagine somebody put a couch out today, and then all that rain, it's not, nobody's gonna want that now.
Right.
It was junk anyway.
Anybody wanted, wouldn't buy it.
If it's out for a day or two, great, beyond that.
I've seen toilet seats. I mean toilets, how in the thing, and we have to get a call, obviously, nobody wants the toilet.
I agree, yeah.
We're not, so we all, we all like that.
We like the lot.
Okay, I think, I think it's actually nice that you get a warning, cause I don't give people warnings for that kind of thing.
Yeah, it's a warning.
Should it be a motion not to do anything with the letter, so that we have it, like, that?
No.
No, doesn't matter.
It's under agent's report.
It's a letter that the agent writes, it's fine.
Yeah.
You're gonna, you're gonna write a hu, a hundred times more letters in the future, yeah, I think it's well-revved.
Well, thank you, I'm sure Jim and Ross helped with it, I don't think I did it all on my own, so.
I'll make a motion that the letter remain the same.
Second. Was it made in second?
No.
That the warning letter remain as written for future use, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Yeah.
Again, they're, they have the ability, just as, call the office, say what you're thinking, say, hey, I'm gonna leave it out for another couple days, see if anyone takes it, and then I'll make sure it's gone. Simple as that.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't see what, what the issue is there, but, okay.
Okay, uh, one other thing, um, Charlie Mello, the conservation agent, when we get a perk application and for whatever the fee is, there's a twenty-five dollar fee, and he goes out and looks at all the properties, tells me if I can perk, if I can't perk, where to perk on the site. And, um, twice a year, he submits his bill, um, he just tallies them all up and gives us a bill for whatever, several hundred dollars at once. Well, the problem is in the budget, we forgot to put in the line item, it hasn't been in there, and for a perk site review, um, as a separate thing, it was always paid for out of the health agent, apparently, or the perk agent, because remember, it was never an agent, it was always like by the thing, and now that I'm a health agent, it's not included in my salary, so what we wanna do is put on an article at the special town meeting to fund the perk site review for approximately a thousand dollars. Um, and so we can add in a line item, apparently in the past, we've reached out to the town accountant, and she's been unwilling to do it, because we always had the line item for the perk stuff, but.
What's the max?
Conservation perk site review.
Well, it was like twelve fifty this year, right?
So I don't want so many.
There were two bills, and I think one of them was like six something, and the other one was like six fifty, so it was like twelve fifty or something, so.
Why don't we do like?
Yeah, you wanna cover it.
Fifteen hundred?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just so we can create the line in the, uh, the budget for it and, um, throw the money into the account.
Ashley Mallory asked me why I was short, and I said we forgot about Charlie, I said I want a line item, she said I swear. So.
I don't know what the issue was.
I would definitely label as conservation.
Conservation perks site review.
Because that way it's, the people don't get confused, special town meetings, and we already have you.
But fifteen, sorry, at fifteen hundred dollars, it's only, uh, one per week. So you're doing at least one perk per week, right?
At least, yeah.
Oh.
Well, and we remember we went to twenty-five dollars an acre for the new construction, as opposed to just twenty-five dollars a lot, so maybe two grams is the right number.
Right. Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know, obviously, at the end of the year, we can move the money around if we need to, but we need a starting point, so.
We have asked the accountant to create this before, because we forgot about it previously, and she refused.
She can create the line, so I can make a warrant article with numbers, and then we'll try to fund it.
Well, and then we'll remember next year budgeting, when we get to that line item, oh, yeah, we need this, not just.
And for everybody at home, this, this money is actually coming in, it's just coming in and going to the general fund, we just need to have the money in the budget in order to pay for that expense. So it's not a burden on the tax lobby.
So do, do we need a motion on that, then?
You need to draft the article.
Uh, not at this time, when I, after I draft, I'll get warrant articles, we'll be acting on the warrant articles, so, which is why we've gotta keep to September meeting. I thought we could do it. No, we wouldn't have time, when's the second meeting in September? They have to be about the twentieth, we gotta do it the first Wednesday.
Sorry, that needs to be on the agenda.
Stacy, just try to get a couple of.
The eleven.
Closer, uh, estimates.
Yep.
Um, try, try three, if we can, if we can, um.
Yeah, good.
That's all I have, thank you.
Good, thank you. Uh, there, all right, we have some minutes to approve, uh, whenever you're ready. I wasn't here for the twenty-fourth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for August fifth, two thousand nineteen emergency meeting.
Okay, I'll step down second motion for the minutes to draw the twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen regular meeting, all in favor? Aye, opposed, carries?
Are you abstaining, Kevin?
Yes.
No, I wasn't here for the fifth.
Make the motion to approve the minutes for August fifth, two thousand nineteen emergency meeting.
Second.
That's when the restriction went on, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, motion made second, approve minutes of August fifth, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, and extensions? Oh, yeah, me. Well, I don't count, uh, cause the motion passed with two votes anyways, so I don't have to move. And the last one, August eighth?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August eighth, two thousand nineteen special meeting.
Second.
Was it made second, approve, special meeting minutes of August eighth, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries? Anything else, anyway? Okay, seeing, seeing nothing else, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion made second, adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, thank you, Cable, thank you, everyone.